Stand for that.
Dance, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, put into justice for all.
Hello.
Okay, thank you. Roll call. Start with roll. Tricia, you're here?
Hi.
David?
Yeah.
Jeff is not here.
I'm here.
You're there?
I am, I'm unnamed.
Okay. Scott?
Here.
John?
Here.
Okay. And I'm here.
I said here.
Okay, I didn't hear ya. Sorry. Uh, all members are present? Okay, was the meeting properly notified, Tim?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and we are recording this session?
That is correct.
Okay, do we have any public comments? Okay, hearing none, highlight on youth this month that we do not have one. Uh, we'll move on to the next section, which is comments from our board members and superintendent. Our first order of business is, uh, Mr. John Hugh. Uh, I would like to thank you for your 15 years of service. I guess I'll, I'll give an opportunity for various, uh, board members to comment. And, uh, I, I will start it off as, uh, saying, I want to thank you very much for your service. Starting out as the, uh, rich banker from, uh, Shoreview. You've made quite the impact on this board. Uh, been a stabilizing force. And, uh, a force that's, uh, helped get things, uh, rolling when we couldn't figure some things out and, uh, I guess I truly appreciate your friendship. I think we've made a lasting friendship with you. I appreciate your, uh, knowledge. Uh, you're quite a bit better at, uh, dealing personnel mission, issues than I. And, uh, I greatly appreciate that, your input and, uh, we're gonna miss you and, uh, I will let the other board members comment, but I, I truly appreciate your friendship and I wish you the best in your future endeavors, so.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you.
Others?
John, it's been a distinct pleasure and an honor to work with you for these years on the school board. Um, your shoes are hard to fill. Just glad that we've had the time to, uh, direct and guide the district as far as we have and hopefully we keep building on the, those good things. Thanks again.
Thanks, Scott.
Uh, John, Jeff, um, it's been great to have you on the board, great to become your friend and just tell you, your work's not done, so don't get too comfortable. And in your honor, I wore no socks tonight, so I wouldn't be distracted with the lint on my socks.
That was a good day.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, John. Um, you're a great mentor. I can always call you and get any questions answered. Um, was great learning from you and I fully enjoy all of your jokes, so I'm definitely gonna miss those.
Thanks, Tricia. John, we came on the board together.
John, thank you very much for, oh, okay. Go ahead, David.
Dave, are you still talking?
You're breaking up, Kirk. We can't hear ya.
He was trying to hand it back.
Oh, my back?
Oh.
I, I, I started talking and then David started talking, so I stopped.
So, um, David's back.
John, we ran together. Um, I think there was six candidates for two open seats. We even had a primary to go through. Um, unlike Trish, I have not enjoyed all your jokes.
One of them.
But coming on the board together, it's been a, a busy path for both of us. I think it's been a good path and honestly, your, your wisdom, uh, has definitely been needed on the board and I, I think we've definitely benefited from it, um, as a district. Um, but coming on together 15 years ago and, and, uh, I guess your effective retirement as of tonight, I do have to say, uh, quitter.
Truly noted. Thanks, David. And you know, I'm quitting because I never beat you, David. You always beat me by six votes.
John, it has been an honor to sit next to you in these meetings. Um, I have been very happy to be on this board with you and I think that you have a very important voice that you've and that will be, that will be missed. Um, I'm hoping that the rest of us can pick up the load and carry on and, uh, that our new board member, um, can become and learn to be as great a board member as you've been. Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
John, I like Trish. Also enjoy your joke.
Anybody?
And like Kirk, I, uh, enjoy sitting next to you. And I'm gonna have to teach Brian how to say play school board after the pledge, because it won't be the same otherwise. Um, you're, uh, you're always, you were never afraid to ask, you know, the tough questions. Um, and I think, uh, your candidness aligns with David's candidness, like he's honest about not liking your jokes. Um, governance, always along with the rest of the board. Um, governance has always been a thing with this board. You, uh, you often spoke alignment whenever we the board got a little off track perhaps, or we started to birdwalk a little, you always came back with alignment. I would be uh, trusted, you know, to do that and, and keep us line visionary, but yeah, um, and, and most importantly, I've enjoyed, um, getting to know you as a friend and always have appreciated your, your support and you seem to have a knack for being very timely with that. Um, your spider senses are always aware of, I know not just me, but personally from my perspective, you always had a knack for, um, just the kind words at a crucial time, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, John, you asked for opportunity.
So, um, I spent some time reflecting on, uh, the top moments. And this might be in order, but not really. Um, the, the top three are probably in order. But I put together a top 10 list of the, uh, top 10 moments and there were so many ways that I could take this, there are so many silly moments that we shared, um, single lines, colors of PowerPoint presentations, uh, jokes that reoccurred over 15 years because they were told once unwittingly and, and that's all enjoyable. But I, I, I decided to take a really sincere approach tonight because I get one chance to really tell all of you what, what stood out to me over 15 years. So, number 10, handing out diplomas almost every year. I think I missed one. And for me, that's about 1,500 graduates, three of them being my own. Just, uh, what an honor to shake hands with our students when they accomplish their, their, uh, high school career and to be able to hand your own kids their diplomas was just a highlight for me. And in 2013, Claire in 2015 and Joe in 2019. Um, number nine, watching Panther Camp come alive in just four days. And how we just rose from literally ashes to this absolute amazing community, uh, effort. And I actually went back and I looked up the roster. There's 150 names that are on the roster and I'm thinking I'm missing a few. And we had about 3,000 hours logged in volunteer time over four days and what a, uh, just a top moment in, in the last 15 years. Um, out of the, probably one of the greatest tragedies in our district, one of the absolute most amazing efforts of community. Uh, number eight, um, expulsion hearings and you're going, how's that a top moment? Um, because we as a board found a way to help students maintain their dignity, um, learn their accountability and stay on a learning path while following the rules that we had to follow around expulsions. And I feel that we as a board set a new tone for what holding students accountable when they make mistakes and how to get them back on track and, and for that, um, I'm just, that, that's one of my top moments. Uh, continuing a strong and vital relationship with the district staff after Act 10. You know, that could have gone so many different ways. And yet, one of the very first things that we did as a board, as a district, as staff was come together. And over and over again, I've learned that when we lean into challenges, good things happen. It certainly did in that situation, even in those tough days. Um, a top moment, number six, Board Bagel Days, End of Year Recognitions, Professional Learning Days, anytime that we had an opportunity or I had an opportunity to engage with our administrators, our staff, uh, people in the school buildings was a good day for me. Uh, number five, getting to go to really amazing performances in the St. Croix Central Community Auditorium that was made possible by the generosity and the support and the confidence of the citizens of our district. And what a absolutely phenomenal performance base that has become for us and I just love going to anything and everything that's there. Um, number four, watching the district grow. Think about where we were 15 years ago and what's changed. We've added 4K, uh, we've added the virtual school, we've added the STEM labs. Um, we've grown extracurricular, Science Olympiad, didn't exist 15 years ago. Destination Imagination, the trap team, most recently soccer. So, just watching the district grow year over year over year over year over year. Not just in size, but in program and opportunity. Number three, highlights on youth. We now as a board know how to unicycle, uh, do archery, um, sing, forensics readings, destination imagination, um, um, demonstration, so many things in between. And that just piggybacks right into number two. And, and a top moment for me is watching students discover themselves and become a better version of themselves over and over again. And think about some of the things we've gotten to see over the last 15 years. The state cookoff champions. I mean, that just moved us as a board and to see those students come back with that blue ribbon. It was less about the ribbon, more about the journey they took to get there. The art murals that are now hanging in the high school and up and down the middle school hallways. Um, and throughout the elementary school. Bus races. To have a student come and tell us all the reasons he doesn't like school and then explain to us without even knowing it, all the things that they have learned because of school is an absolute top moment. And that day that we got to sit and listen to the stories of our alt ed students. I don't know that there was a more joyful day on the boards than listening to those students in the meeting and I hand their diplomas a few short weeks later. And my top moment is working with the board administration, staff and community that every day commit themselves, wake up and show up to make a difference for students. And it's not just student achievement. It's student character, it's student readiness, it's student well-being, it's student engagement. It's showing up every day to be excellent for our students. And I couldn't have done the last 15 years without the love and the support of Amy. My three, Anna, our three, Anna, Claire and Joe. I couldn't have done it without the trust and confidence of the community. The wisdom and guidance of all of you as my board peers. And the meaningful engaging relationships that we were able to share over the last 15 years. So from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you. I appreciate each of you. Yes, I will miss you. I might even come back once in a mo- while on a Monday for a public comment. So, thank you all and thanks for an amazing 15-year run. Thanks, Howard.
Thank you, John. You will be truly missed, but I hope you don't make yourself scared, so. I, uh, hope that you will be around and, uh, show up even if we give us a hard time at the board meeting once in a while.
Promise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, then we will move on to the next item, which is our newly elected, uh, elected, reelected board members. So, congratulations, David, on your reelection. And congratulations, Brian, on your election to the St. Croix Central School Board. So, a lot of work to do and, uh, I think you'll all be up to it. So, congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you. Congratulations and, and thank you. Thank you for, for running and volunteering your, your time for our community and for our kids.
I'm not gonna congratulate either one of you till you take your oath.
Okay. Is there anything else on that? Okay, with that, I would invite them to, uh, read their official oath of office before us and, uh, I believe they have a copy of it, so we'll need to get that signed. And then we'll need to get that to the witness, Pam. But we'll need to get that back to the office as soon as possible. We need it back on file by next Monday. Make it official. So, turn it over to you two. So, if you would read your, uh, written oath of office, if you have a copy of it in front of you.
You want?
Well, I'll go ahead, I guess. I, David Olson, having been elected or appointed to the Office of St. Croix Central Board, School Board of the State of Wisconsin, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Hi, Brian Colfield. Is it, is my mic on?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I'm not getting the signal. Okay, I'll just try to put it on. I, Brian Colfield, have been elected or appointed to the Office of St. Croix Central School Board of the State of Wisconsin, swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin and will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Thank you both and welcome aboard.
Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
Glad to have you back, David.
Can I? Can scan it PDF? Can email it?
Sure.
Cause I have a, an Adobe app that I can just sign it and create a PDF and just send it over then?
Yep, that'd be fine.
Alright. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Brian.
Thank you. Congratulations to you. I think you beat me. I didn't even look, but I'm assuming.
Welcome. Used to it.
That's what, that doesn't make me bad, you beat John too, so. Howard, you're on mute.
Sorry. You wanna expand on that, Tim?
I didn't hear anything you said.
Perfect.
You, uh, we're going over to Evers' Safer at Home Order number 28.
Yeah, pretty straightforward. It just extends, um, our school closure through the end of the school year, which, uh, I got clarification on, it's June 30th. So that does mean summer school in person as well. But, uh, the admin team will start discussing, uh, if, when and how, um, we would do summer school and meal delivery, et cetera. Um, we're, uh, meeting again tomorrow, so we'll discuss that.
Okay. I've been trying to figure out what, uh, his address today with this, uh, Badger Back Open or whatever he calls it, uh, how that affects the schools, uh, this year. My understanding is that he only had the authority for a 60-day emergency order, which, uh, expires on May 11th. So, I'm not sure what's going to happen. Uh, there seems to be some, uh, conflict in the order. Uh, so, I'm sort of on a wait and see basis. I'm not yet fully convinced that we won't be back in school this year yet, but we'll wait and see. So.
Well, we'll continue, continue to monitor that and, um, if there's any inkling that, that's a, a, a real possibility, we'll certainly have a, a plan B uh, in place. Um, makes me a little nervous, right? Uh, we'd, we'd like a little bit of heads up, you know, more than days, hopefully weeks if that does happen, but the clock is certainly ticking.
Yeah. Well, when I think of what has happened over the last month, uh, it makes my head spin. So, thank everybody for their hard work and, uh, implementing the things that we've had to implement over the last, uh, month. So, it's been pretty amazing. There any other questions or comments on the governor's order? Hearing that, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our support, Matt, uh, support staff meet and confer meetings. Uh, we had one set. I guess we need to get a status report of, of that. I guess, uh, I think the future meetings will have to set up virtually. So, questions, comments there from the committee? Staff?
Prior to or, or in addition to maybe setting something up virtually, Tim, do you think we could send a survey to the groups to ask them to give us some feedback, um, that they may have given in an in-person meeting?
Yeah, I like that idea, Scott. We certainly can do that. I'll work with Pam on that. Um, you know, we were supposed to meet last Monday, but when all this came out, we just canceled it, but since then, we've learned we can operate pretty effectively virtually. So, um, yeah, I would, I would encourage us to reschedule that, get it on the, on a calendar. Um, we're planning on keeping the teacher one for May 11th. So if we could maybe, if with your, you know, blessing, we, uh, Pam can get that rescheduled if we find a date that works for all of us.
Okay.
We've typically done Mondays, so I'll just throw that out there. Um,
Works for.
Okay. Monday tends to.
The difficulty, the difficulty is the fourth is board learning, the 11th is teacher meet and confer. The 18th is the regular board meeting, the 25th is Memorial Day. Um, unless we wanted to know that wouldn't work. If we stuck with Mondays, we'd almost have, yeah, next Monday's a real quick turnaround.
I'm good any day of the week. I, I don't know, Kirk, though, you're still working, so.
And I can make whatever work. Especially if I don't have to be back in town, you know, if I, I can do it virtually at any time wherever I am, so.
Any other days work, Kirk?
Thursdays also work, work okay for me.
What would be the earliest?
Thursdays.
But what would be the earliest, um, time of day that you could meet on a Thursday?
Get home between 5:15 and 5:30.
Should we shoot for five?
Whatever, yeah, I can make it work.
I usually get home between I get home between 5:15 and 5:30.
So start at 5:30 then I'm here? On a Thursday? Okay. How about?
That would work for me.
Yeah, Tim, are you talking about the support staff?
Correct.
Okay, um, we were gonna start it at 3:30 because of all the groups?
Yeah. The, the, the problem with 5:30 is we'd probably go to at least 10:30, right?
Right.
Um, I think we started earlier and just, Kirk, I think you just said, well, I'll join when I can. Is that acceptable?
A little work. As long as everybody else is okay with me not being there for the first couple.
Okay.
Yeah, we can make it, we can make it work.
How about Thursday, the 14th?
To make that work.
Okay, and that'll give us time. I can send out the, the Google form, get their feedback and have that, uh, ahead of time as well. Alright, we'll move forward with that then. Um, we'll work with Pam and we'll get that scheduled.
Okay. With that, then we have the teacher meet and confer meeting update. Uh, we're still scheduled for a meeting on May 11th.
4:30 at the, uh, high school. I think it's.
We had. To elementary.
That's right, and it's gonna be virtual anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But it'll be virtual, so it really doesn't matter where we, where we are. Okay.
Okay.
That works.
Okay, is there anything else that we need to, uh, comment on at this time?
So Pam, um, for everyone to join virtually, you would just need to invite all the teaching staff to that, um, invite in Google.
Right.
Are we gonna have additional invites sent out with the link on it? Are we gonna edit the one that was sent out?
I think the best would be for Pam just to add the teaching staff, um, to that original invite.
I just don't show a link on mine for, uh, having it as virtual.
Oh, okay, if you have the actual calendar invite that says join hangouts meet, that's what she would click on.
That's what I'll use.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I'll also put it on the agenda too.
Okay.
When I post it, it'll be on the top like that, so, yeah.
Okay, is there anything else we need to cover on that then? Okay, uh, one last item is I would like to personally thank the, uh, middle school pairs and staff, the, for the wonderful gift that we received this morning. It was very much unexpected. Very much appreciated and like to give my heartfelt thank you, uh, to all those that were involved in that. It was, uh, very touching and it meant a lot to me, so, thank you.
Yeah, it was awesome. I've already shared a note with Pete and, uh, Tim, but make sure that the pairs understand how meaningful that was. It was great.
Agreed.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. Okay, uh,
I also.
Breaking up, Kirk. Okay.
I just, I, I just said that I also agree. It was a nice surprise.
Okay. Yes. Okay. So thank you all. Uh, moving on to the next agenda item, we have no, uh, scheduled presentations by, uh, guests or staff members. We'll move into the financial reports quickly.
Bank account balances as of March 31st, 2020. Citizens state checking, $3,437,715.2. Citizens money market, $12,180.18. Citizen state bank money market fund 46, $52.85. Citizen state bank money market suicide prevention fund, $19,102.30 for total bank account balances of $3,469,050.35.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So, motion.
So motion second.
To have a motion, David, second, John, to accept the treasurer's report as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, uh, moving on to the next item, which is our consent agenda, which consists of approval of our meeting minutes for our sixteenth. Uh, wage and benefit committee meeting, our our. Regular board meeting of March sixteenth, our wage and benefit committee meeting of April sixth, our board uh learning. Meeting minutes of April sixth, approval of the bi-monthly bills for April, approval of resignations and retirements, uh. Tie cuts, our uh full-time high school, our physical education teacher, Ryan Wood. Our full-time high school business uh information technology teacher. Uh. I also have a resignation of Brianna Forrest. Our full-time C-team volleyball coach, approval of appointments and contract modifications. Brian Johnson as our full-time high school assistant principal and activities director. Leah Volker, our full-time uh director of special education and student services. Kelly Gorman, our full-time second edu- uh second grade uh teacher, the elementary school. So. Do I uh have a motion?
Move to accept as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I had a.
Okay, I had a, I had a motion uh by John, by David. Uh. To accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
Okay, opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Okay. With that, motion carries. Okay. Uh, regards to the consent agenda, I want to welcome our new employees, especially a return of Brian Johnson, one of our old SCC alumni. It's uh great to have him back in the district. Okay, moving on, uh administrative reports, we have the spring extracurricular uh survey. Tim, you wanna cover that?
Yes, sure. So I included it as exhibit eleven A. Um, I just did a Google form, you know, the last time we met, the board just said that there, you know, should be some expectations. Um, because the activities vary so greatly, you know, felt more comfortable asking, you know, uh what they have done and what they plan to do yet rather than directing them. It's impossible to say, hey, you should do this with sixty-two different uh activities. So um, there were forty-nine responses for the sixty-two. Um, and uh you can see them in there, um, you know, hours and tasks very greatly. I I don't. Have anything other than that to just present that to you and ask if there are any questions.
Reviewing it, it appeared that most of them are pretty grateful to uh just uh now that contract paid out for the remainder of the year. Any other comments? Okay, not hearing any, we'll move on to the next item. This is our key work of our school board, starting with our student staff and community recognition. John.
So these are the uh recognitions for this month. A thank you to Keith Hanson, Lee Jacobson, Russell Johnson, Donna Cotry, Erin Knowles. Michael Lang. Bill Naraki.
Lynn Perso.
Bill Menory. Lori Peterson. Bo Peterson, Deborah Roberts. And Lee Sarge.
Bob Sather.
Thank you for the amazing job you do daily, driving the buses safely, wearing smiles. And for your efforts to teach courtesy, respect, and cleanliness, even when it is usually met with eye-rolling and grumbling. You are appreciated. That's our bus driving corps. And uh Pete, my understanding is that they're continuing to uh rocket on the uh delivery services as well. So thank you to Brian Peterson. Thank you, Brian, for the tremendous job you do in keeping our buses in tip-top shape. Developing routes and the flexibility that you have shown when working with special special education transportation needs. Even more recently, thank you for your early efforts in developing routes and transporting food to our families. Your long hours and hard work make such a difference to ensure all transportation needs are taken care of. We are grateful for all you do. A recognition to Trevor Nelson. Congratulations on receiving the Goldwater Scholarship in recognition of your academic success and future endeavors. All of Saint Christ Central is proud of you. A thank you to Tammy Simonson and the food service staff. Thank you for your outstanding efforts in preparing and packaging four hundred meals daily for our students during the closure. Your dedication to our kids is amazing. A thank you to American Legion Post four thirty-two and Gary Hawkins. Thank you for your generous donation to the students and families of Saint Christ Central. These will forever be appreciated, and I should say represented by. Gary Hawkins. A thank you to the auxiliary of Hammond and Roberts, also represented by Gary Hawkins. Thank you for your generous donation to the students and families of Saint Christ Central. They will forever be appreciated. And a thank you to Gretchen and Dan Weatherly. Thank you for your generous donation towards student headphones at the elementary school. The students are thrilled to have them. Those are the uh board recognitions for this month, Howard.
Okay, thank you, John, and congratulations to all those uh recognitions. Uh, thank you to those uh members and administration who submitted those, so good job. Okay.
Howard, I could jump in real quick. This is Pete. Um, John had asked it um or made a comment on whether or not the bus drivers are still helping with food and they are. They're doing amazing job and um we had a couple teachers that volunteered and made them some pretty awesome masks. But one of the main reasons I wanted to jump in um to also recognize Brian is we had our our big um. Our uh big uh ju- our bus um in investigation last week in regards to uh checking all of our buses for safety. And we got through it and Brian got uh all the buses passed with one little fluke. When the guy was checking our buses out, he actually broke something himself. And Brian had to fix it for him and then he passed the bus, so uh kudos to Brian for getting that done.
Okay. I'm proud of him. He didn't have any bad words to say when that that happened. So. Congratulations and uh thank you to all our uh transportation staff, so. Much appreciated. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, discussion on future district needs and priorities. I think the only thing we need to cover is that we did uh, Tim, you wanna give us an update as far as where we are with the Donovan group?
Yeah, we're just uh in a holding pattern right now. I haven't um other than informed both he and Doreen of our of the decision. Um, just in a holding pattern, uh just kind of see what we want the next steps to be. Haven't pursued any official contract or anything because it's that would be difficult to do without knowing exactly our scope of work. So I think we, I'm looking for input from the board as to. What the next step should be, because a lot of their, a lot of the work he's gonna do is in-person. Community and staff feedback sessions.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else that we need to cover on that item?
One other thing, uh Jen, I just want to confirm with you, um, our population study, she's waiting on. She um kind of subcontracts the housing portion of it. So um, there was a little delay in that, but the person she works with is getting her the info. And I believe Jen, she said May, right, is when we should expect that.
Okay.
It looked like Jen might have just bowed out.
Yeah. She was just there, must have hit the wrong.
Okay.
But yeah, uh she said early May is when we should expect that population study, so that's another piece.
Okay, well, we're looking forward to that. That's a critical piece uh to our decision-making, so.
And the third, third piece um is later on in our agenda with Brian Brewer.
Okay. Okay, are there any other uh questions with regards to the district needs at this point? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the next one is to designate uh board members uh. Hand out diplomas for our two thousand and twenty graduation, which at this point is scheduled for July twenty-fifth, I believe.
Yes, five o'clock.
Okay.
Dibs.
Okay, we have David, are there others? Okay. I can pop in there if uh we need somebody, so.
I can help if you need live bodies.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we get that, Ron, Pam?
Um, it's not something I.
Okay. Anybody else?
I will not be around.
No, I'm not available either.
Okay.
Thank goodness for conditioning.
I will not be able to.
I'm available if you need me.
Okay.
But it's.
Okay, so that will be the plan pending no other uh changes, so. With that, is there anything else we need to cover on the graduation ceremony?
Did you guys see the email? Um, the parent emailed about the honoring seniors, the banners. I forwarded that to Kurt, but um, because it's not really our area, but.
Yeah, I see. Think there's some concern that we're not going to have a graduation ceremony and I I think for all intents and purposes, uh, we are planning on it, so.
But I hope it happens.
Okay.
And I tell you what, Friday night, Howard, the uh, the um. Twenty twenty recognition at eight twenty with the stadium lights and the um Randy Pfeiffer, the building lit up on the exterior. And uh Kurt and Jason and their team just put together a really neat event. And Kurt, I don't know if you know how many seniors participated. Uh, Amy and I were estimating that it was probably close to half of them. And they made a big deal out of it and the parking lot perimeter was full of people, you know, flashing their lights and honking the horns and all of that. And um, if you followed social media after that, it meant a lot to a lot of our seniors and their families. So that was a really neat event.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
I don't know if we've covered it before, but for Brian's information, usually there's three board members. Was out, so um anybody that has a family member graduating gets to call dibs.
Oh, okay.
And you need to serve up.
Anything else? Okay.
There are the jokes.
Okay. Then we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the. Defeasance of a portion of the Saint Christ Central School District. Eight uh million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar general.
No, I'll be asking about attendance later on.
So. So uh with that, um, I would move, uh, we have Brian Brewer on the line. So with that, Brian. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Howard. Good evening, board, uh, Tim and Jen. Uh, Pam, am I, do you have it to where I can present that PDF? Like, can I flip through the pages as we talk about it?
Brian, you should be able to, if you scroll down in the bottom, it says present now. And you kind of scroll down and the little ribbon pops up. Um, in the right-hand corner, present now.
Okay.
You should be, you should be able to hit that and then you double-click or click on the your screen, then it pops up. There we go, yep, perfect.
Are you, so you're seeing it?
Yeah.
Okay. And then is that zoomed in enough for everyone? There's a lot of numbers on the stage, but.
Yeah.
We also have.
We'll have to squint. Yeah, everybody's got the exhibit.
Okay, well, just interrupt me as we go here. There's, you know, we're covering a decent amount of ground, but the the most straightforward part of the discussion is the action item for tonight. Um. This is um a uh debt prepayment the board levied for as part of the nineteen twenty. Uh, school year, it was a five hundred thousand dollars uh with the intention to pay down a portion of the outstanding debt. Uh, position the district for future needs, whether it be an operational. Referendum or a a future capital referendum. Um, I spent some time with Howard, uh, Tim and Jen in February after the convention. Uh, saw other board members at the convention in January. And uh after the discussion, we had identified that targeting. Twenty twelve bonds, which as you see on the screen here, um, from two thousand and twenty-two through two thousand and twenty-five. The interest rates aren't very high at two to two point six percent interest, but what it does is.
Attached to the agenda.
Okay.
Pam, I think your your mic is live. So I'm not sure, can we all mute if we're not speaking and then I'll just help with the background noise?
So ultimately, the far-right column.
Go ahead, Brian.
This debt prepayment or debt defeesance is targeting. Your debt levy for this year between your referendum approved debt and your energy efficiency debt is approximately three point nine million. Um, scheduled to to step to two point nine. And then with this prepayment, it creates a drop to two point six. And then another drop to two point five, two point four, and then levels out around two point four for the remainder of the debt payments through two thousand and thirty-five. Um. As you have been discussing, the the plan would be to build the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one uh budget. Uh, maintaining that debt levy at three point nine such that um as you head into two thousand and twenty-one. You will again to be able to prepay debt and avoid interest costs. Um, and in your case, uh, because you receive thirty-three cents on every dollar you spend. Um, you know, related to this five hundred thousand, in addition to the eighteen thousand of interest costs. And then the 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 levy management over the next four years, you will also receive an additional hundred and sixty-six, hundred and sixty-five thousand of interest. Or I'm sorry, state aid in the uh two thousand and twenty, twenty-one uh budget year. So ultimately, that's what the the formal action is for this evening. It's to direct Jen to um proceed with the paperwork uh with Tom Greggs to create the escrow and prepay these four years. Um, uh, of the two thousand and twelve bond issue. To to continue the thought process as you scroll to the next page, this is a hypothetical illustration. That shows the same two thousand and twelve bonds after this year's defeesance. With, um, the, the levy next year maintaining the 3.9 million of referendum approved debt levy plus energy efficiency. So that generates about a million one that allows you to again, prepay the maturities from 2022 through 2025. Ultimately lowering those payments from 2.6 as of the action tonight to what would, what would then be 2.3. So further creating a, a reduction in the future, um, total school levy uh, to accommodate any, um, voter approved levies, whether it's operational or capital in the future. Visually, this is probably, this page is probably the easiest to digest. Um, you'd see the first two bars representing 1920 and 2021 hovering around that 3.9 million. Uh, combined levy, the dotted boxes in 22 through 25 represent the debt being prepaid and the drop from the top of the solid bar to the top of the, uh, black portion of the bars going forward represents that levy reduction that's, that's built into the future planning for the district. That drop represents approximately a dollar 65 on the total school mill rate. If, if, if you drop from the 3.9 to the 2.3. So I'll pause there for a second just to answer any questions if there are any. And then I'll then the next few pages, um, show examples of some of the planning items that the board has been discussing and how that fits in with this structured drop in, in the debt levy portion of the total school budget.
Brian, this is John here. Is there any downside to this? I mean, prepaying debt to me is always a good thing. Uh, but is it taking away from other immediate expenditures that we need to take care of? Or is that, uh, offset by, I mean, a, a 165,000 into our budget next year is a big deal. And the savings and the mill rate savings are a big deal. Is there any downside in your mind to prepaying this?
Uh, no, John, the, the, these levies are not competing with the operational budget levy. This is referendum approved outside of the revenue limit. So these dollars are levied for the sole purpose of repaying referendum approved debt, which is what you would be doing with them. As you mentioned, the additional expenditure in, in the district's, uh, current aid reimbursement formula would bring additional equalization aid into next year, which it, while it doesn't add to classroom dollars, it does help to, uh, offset the, uh, local share of the total school property tax, uh, which is, which is a beneficial item. Um, the one, the one area that, um, we did discuss as we were looking at options for how to spend the 500,000. Um, one, one option would have been to target this final 2035 treaty, uh, which would have increased the interest cost avoidance portion. But it wouldn't have achieved your levy reduction target in the, in the next few years, which, you know, is part of your, your overall financing plan. Um, so it was, you know, ultimately it's target the dollars to prepay where you, you know, are looking to offset, um, potential new levy related to a potential.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Brian?
Brian, since we have you here, um, under the current, uh, climate, is there anything else that you think we should be thinking of? In terms of bond, uh, rates and those sorts of things?
Yeah. So, um, you know, I, I monitor this page, which is, is not in your packet. Um, this is the, your outstanding series of debt related to the prior referendum and, and debt refinancings, uh, over the last 10 years. And as you look through this, you'll notice that, uh, the rates are in, in the twos and three percent interest rate range. Um, so we continue to monitor to see if there are opportunities, uh, to refinance. Um, given that US Treasury rates are setting new historical lows. The municipal market, um, environment. I'll flip over to this slide, which is also not in your packet, but I like it. Uh, this is the chart that I have used with the board for many years. It's that 30-year snapshot of where long-term municipal rates are. And the upper right corner kind of paints the picture of what the municipal market has been doing in the last 30 days. As fear and uncertainty entered the market, uh, in our response to the, um, you know, slowing the spread, um, investors stopped buying bonds and, and in fact, were trying to sell at all costs to raise cash. So that caused the spike that you're seeing, um, in late March and early April. And then over the last couple of weeks, as the Federal Reserve's actions, as well as the, um, CARES Act have started to work their way into the economy, there's been a little bit more normalization to where investors are looking back and saying, you know, where are, what, what aspect of the market is the safest? And it continues to be, you know, US Treasuries and the municipal bonds, like the school districts' bonds. We spiked up and then spiked back down to where, if you look at the dotted line across the bottom, we're, we're, you know, outside of February, we are at lows that, you know, you haven't seen in 30 to 50 years. So we'll continue to monitor to see if, um, there are any refinancing opportunities coming up. Um, Scott, but, uh, right now there's nothing that would generate enough savings because your interest cost that's already locked in is so low.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. Are there other?
Jeff Redman, um, a little disappointed you don't have a suit on. Uh, I don't think I've ever seen you without a suit. We're virtual, but you know, you owe us a suit.
I did put the tie on.
Okay. All right.
There, here's, here's my jacket.
All right. Thank you.
Brian, you can't wait. Jeff doesn't have.
So you have to wear a suit coat. Um, can you give us a sense of a buck 65? What kind of a bond number would that allow us to borrow kind of without raising taxes from current rates?
Um, well, I'd, so I can, I can calculate that if you gave me a few minutes. But look, Jeff, let me answer it a different way. Um, in, in my conversations with Tim and Jen and Howard, um, coming out of the convention, you know, our, our discussion was creating that capacity for levy reduction and, and, and absorbing something new. But it sounded like the near-term focus was on how do you, um, uh, absorb the, the wage and benefit program plan that, that, um, is being discussed? Um, so we looked at two, you know, funding levels that, that Jen, it's, it's a live and ongoing process. But, you know, one of the iterations was, um, initial infusion of two, 2,275 uh, plus an annual increase of 500,000 each year. So to isolate those levies, we, we created this one pager. And when I say isolate, you know, your, your operational budget is going to continue to, to grow and change based on, you know, a few year in and year out by your budgets, right? So this is trying to isolate the dollars that are focused on that, uh, initiative.
Yeah.
So if you, if the plan were to be the, the 2.2 million of, uh, year one infusion with the maintenance of 500,000 increase each year, using your state aid reimbursement at 33%, you know, year one, it would be a full impact of two, 2,275 for a 2.99, $2.99 cent mill rate increase. Year two, that aid kicks in and, and buys the, the net impact of the local levy down to 260. But by year three, you're back up to that 2.97 because you're, you've added another million. So it really, so I don't want to get too long-winded here. It really ultimately comes down to what is the, the ultimate funding plan that would be, um, paid for by additional levy support via an, an operational referendum? Because this far right column i- is the amount that it would take for, for that, um, in isolation. And then, so back to your question, Jeff, that, that dollar 65 would, would go to offset the impact of this to start with before, um, funding the, the capital. We can look at it in the reverse, but from the conversations over the last few months, I, you know, we, we were looking at um, the, the drop in the, the debt levy, uh, being a portion of the offset to this operational increase. Um, so if we flip to the next page, this is, um, the scenario where currently the, the board budgets annually 200,000 of the, the, uh, new, the next year's budget towards wage and benefits. And so this is a scenario where we take that 200,000 and apply it to the, the, the wage and benefit program. Um, so instead of needing 2.2, now you need a little over 2 million. And instead of growing it at 300 or 500,000, you grow it at 300,000. And so you see the, the top mill rates over here, you know, start out in the 270s as opposed to the 2, uh, 290s.
And the buck 65 would come off the top. Which other of these scenarios, a buck 65 would come off the top of those net mill rate numbers?
E- exactly. Right. So if you have a re-reduction in the Fund 39 levy of the dollar 65, and then you have the increase of the Fund 10 levy of 273, your, your increase in year one is that net difference.
Yeah, that's very helpful. Thank you.
And so just to finish the thought there, we then came back around to capital. Um, and said, uh, you know, if, if in addition to the wage and benefit program, you know, the board wanted to try and address some additional capital needs because rates are, are still historically low, what, how could we structure new, like, and we just use a, a hypothetical 10 million projects attached to that, it was just, what would it look like? And so that's what we were doing with this next page. So as I mentioned in the beginning in that bar chart, your, your debt payments are scheduled to go until 2035 currently. And, um, I, I used a four and a quarter, uh, 20-year borrowing rate. 20-year borrowing rate right now is probably in the high twos. Um, you know, especially when, when the principal maturities are, are, uh, paid off in the, the last six years. Um, we then, you know, paid the interest in those early 14 years such that your, your debt levies here in the middle level out in that 2.8, 2.9 million range. Because your debt levy is going down, we are showing that you're eight, you would actually lose aid. In reality, you know, as the debt levy goes down and your operating levy goes up, it's kind of a wash. But that's why you see a, an increase in your state aid impact. Ultimately, you keep working your way over to the, to the right here. The net effect of the combined mill rate for debt levels out around $4. So it's like a dollar 35-ish to take. And then you have your, you layer in this 273 from the previous page such that when you look at the combined levies, when you take your existing and approved Fund 39 plus the energy efficiency plus the operational wage and benefit program plus a hypothetical 10 million structure to pay off the principal after, uh, your current debt is retired. You could layer all this together to where your, your mill rate for, for debt is currently $5.35. And over that 10 years, as we step into the payments, you would end up topping out at around $7 such that your, your impact of all of those things together ends up being about a dollar 70 over where, uh, where you currently are for the debt levy. A lot of assumptions baked into that, as I mentioned, 4% uh, interest, uh, principal repayment in from 2036 to 2041. Um, your state aid reimbursement is still 33%. We're assuming property value growth of 2%. You've grown, uh, more than that in recent years. And, and we all remember post-recession, you, you had a few years where you, you were negative growth. But built into these mill rate assumptions is, is a 2% growth. And we're currently using the, um, the second operational referendum scenario of 2,750 in year one, then 300,000 each year thereafter. And we're, we're currently doing that for 10 years. And then, you know, the, the theory being, you know, in, in a future year, a future board would have to discuss what, you know, would they go back to, to ask a question for, you know, to continue that increased maintenance number or not? So then the final slide that we, we developed for this discussion tonight was how does this page look if we zero out that debt? So this should, you know, ultimately tie the concepts together that Jeff, you were, you were asking about. Here's the referendum approved debt through 2035. In this illustration, there's no new debt. Um, you know, as I mentioned, if you step down from 3.9 to 2.3, that's a million six less of a expenditure that you're assuming. So you lose aid about a half a million. So then the combined cost factoring the aid is about a million dollar drop, which ends up being these mill rates. You layer in this blue column, which represents the new wage and benefit increase referendum, which then levels out at this, you know, we could probably smooth this out a little bit more, but, but just, you know, as we, you know, as currently constituted, it would, it would level out in that 640 to 650. And out here it tops it's $6.70. So you're about a dollar 38 um, mill rate increase over current. So I know I said there, there's a lot of moving parts in these assumptions, but I, I did want to the, the, these referendum approved components of your total school budget could fit together to achieve these long-term planning goals for the district.
Okay.
Brian, this is John. So I respect your, um, estimates of the four and a quarter and the 2%, and I understand why you do that. If you were to go on optimistic at a 3%, which seems more likely, uh, how much do you pick up on a, on a percent savings and interest?
Yeah. So, so every 1% on a, on a $10 million borrowing is, is 100,000. It, you know, and then you're, in this illustration, we're borrowing, you know, for the past, you know, we're borrowing basically from year 14 through year 20. So let's call it an average life of 16 years. So that would, that would be, if you could borrow closer to 3%, um, you're avoiding $2 million of interest cost or financing cost that would need to be paid back. So that 7,400,000 that I'm showing here at the bottom of this page. John, if we reran this page at a three or a three and a quarter, you're going to end up somewhere in that, you know, 5-point range.
And what's that due to mill?
Yeah. Well, I mean, it would, it would take, so every, your property value base is currently 731,000. Or I'm sorry, 7 million? Yeah. So every 100,000 on that 731 million. on that 731 million is going to be 73 cents.
Okay.
Yeah, 14 cents.
So that buck thirty-eight could cut in half on a percent less if I'm, if I'm following you correctly.
And no, it's, it's, sorry, it's 14 cents. For every $100,000 reduction, it's 14 cents.
Okay, that seems, I was gonna, that sounded too good.
Yeah, it's like a 10% reduction, I guess, on the dollar thirty-eight one.
But forecasting, we're not really guessing on current interest rates. It's going to be interest rates next, a year from now. So
I understand that. I mean, you run it at the four and a quarter. I'm just trying to figure out how much you pick up on a percent. So it's about 14 cents. Thank you.
There are other, Mr. Brian? Okay. Then before us, we have a resolution, which hopefully everybody had a chance to read. Okay. I guess we need a motion, a second to move forward with this, if this is what we choose to do.
I'll move the resolution as presented.
Okay. Okay, that Kirk? Okay, I have a motion, Jeff, second Kirk, to move forward with the resolution, authorizing the defusance of a portion of the St. Croix Central School District, 8.5 to $5 million in general obligation refunding bonds. So everybody understands the motion? Okay, those, those in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. So, thank you. We'll move forward at that. And we'll get this thing signed. Jen and Brian will work out the details. But Mr. Greg.
We will. Have a good evening, Board. And John, it's been great working with you on the board for this many years.
Thanks, Brian. Likewise.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Good evening. Okay. Next, I think we've already talked about this a little bit, but this was the discussion of the financial impact of the operational and capital project referendum. I think we covered some of the scenarios on that. I think we need a much more detailed discussion of that in the future. But are there any questions with regards to that? Or is there anything we need to discuss at this time? Okay, hearing none, then we will move on to the next order of business, which is other business. Do we have any other business that we have not covered at this time? Okay, hearing none. We've got important upcoming dates. First are April 21 through 23rd. 2020 are the WASB new school board member gatherings. These are done virtually. They start at seven o'clock. They're a good, if you haven't attended one, they're a good orientation for new board members. So I would encourage Brian, if you have an opportunity to pick one of those to go through that. I will probably listen in. If you give me an indication of which one you're going to attend, I may pop into and go to that one also.
Does it mean I work better for you?
No, I am retired, so it doesn't make any difference to me.
Okay.
Just give me a heads up and send it or something.
Yeah, I'll shoot you a note.
Okay. Okay, last word I had, any WASB webinars, seminars to be held this year are going to be held virtually until further notice. Next opportunity, our next meeting is scheduled for May 4th. We'll have a district meeting at 6:30. Scheduled for the district office, we'll probably hold that one virtually also, as we have been doing. And continue that until further notice. We have the teacher meet and confer scheduled for May 11th. We have also the set, the support staff meet and confer has also been set for May 14th, I believe. And the next regular school board meeting scheduled for seven o'clock on May 18th. This will be our board reorganizational meeting. So hopefully we can do that in person. If not, we will also make arrangements to do that virtually. And the last date I have is scheduled July 25th, 2020, is our St. Croix Central graduation ceremony, 5:00 PM at the Tom Semph High School gym. So there any other questions or comments?
Tim, are there any wage and benefit committee meetings that aren't on the list there?
There are not, no. I just, just again, wanted to confirm that the credits, wait, Alt Comp Plan is ceasing to exist this summer. So moving forward, we won't have that. It's just going to be that flat flat rate increase for all, divided equally among FTEs. So if that is again confirmed, then I can get that message out to staff because some are asking if, you know, about credits for next year, et cetera, already. Just confirming that.
Tim, this is John. I sent you a note. I just want to make sure that when you discuss that, we did talk about it going to the flat increase. However, we wanted to make sure that it's still included if someone earned their masters. They would get their master's bump. So does that come out first and then the balance is divided?
Um, yes, that would, that would. Because again, Jen, if you understand any differently, the $2,500 master bump comes out of the pot. Whatever is left of the pot is divided equally among the FTEs.
Yep. So now it's no longer credits towards masters. It's when they earn their masters that they would get the $2,500 bump.
Correct.
In the following year.
Yep.
Thank you.
Howard, I just want to mention, you know, we went away from the earning pay for credits taken in part thinking that we were going to move to the new model that you know, requires funding. I have continued to have concern that if we just do a lump sum for every employee, it's hard for younger people to catch up ever. So I just think we need to be mindful that as we move forward with the referendum, if that initiative falters, or I just think we should have a Plan B about a compensation model that has the sequenced raises. It may be at a lesser level if we can't afford the the one that we've talked about that requires a referendum. You know, it's just to not give the younger people a chance to catch up at a faster rate, kind of destines them to earn 40,000 for a long time, which isn't enough money to live off of. So I just say that I'm okay. This is what the Wage and Benefit Committee decided, but it really was anticipating that we would move forward with an Alt Comp model that you know, we understood would require a referendum.
Okay. Now, if I understand you right, are you talking about not giving them a flat rate?
No, the
A lump sum.
The expectation is we had 200,000 for teacher pay increase. You take it by the number of FTEs and everybody would get the same amount. That's what we decided, right, Tim? I mean, that's what we decided. But it has a, I think, an unintended consequence of leaving younger teachers. It's really hard for them to catch up if we do that in a year or two.
I just have a quick question too. So we're not giving the credit payout next year. So if teachers were taking credits this year and expecting a raise?
No, they're getting those.
That's taking effect next year. But then this gives them a heads up to not take credits for this upcoming year. Thinking that it applied to a comp that's no longer in existence.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, that they're aware. Thank you.
Okay, are there other questions from board members? Okay, hearing none. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session for Wisconsin State Statute 1985-1C, consideration of employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This is a discussion of consideration of the wage and benefits package for the 2020, 2021 school year. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
I second.
Okay. I have a question, Kirk. Second, Trisha.
Go in.
Go in. Closed session, roll call. Trisha. She's muted. Trisha's aye.
Aye. Aye.
David.
Aye.
Jeff.
Jeff.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Okay, Howard, sir's aye. John?
Aye.
Kirk?
Aye.
Okay, at this point, we will adjourn our public meeting and grab our, I think we have that on our Google Calendar, and we'll reconvene in closed session. Okay. Okay.
Parallel universe.
(laughing)
Alright, looks like it's still being recorded. Hopefully it stopped when the last person ended.
It was Jeff.
It's me, yeah.
The sockless wonder.
So it wouldn't be much different than our regular meeting having thirty-five minutes of dead air.
Thanks Scott. I'm in hot air.
Okay, at this point, what do we have to report at this point that we've agreed on? Raises for the staff at two percent?
Two percent across the board for all salaries, including sub- substitute rates.
For all district positions.
All district, yep. Okay. Completely true because not all teachers are getting a two percent. That's right. Well, so not individual by classification.
We have allocated two percent.
And with respect to the teachers, it's allocated consistent with the continuing Ed model approved last year. Yeah.
Okay. Is there any, uh? Everybody agrees to that statement? Okay. Okay, that's what we will report out as. Is there any other action that we need to take at this point?
One last thing for John Uwe.
Thank you.
Don't be a stranger.
Well, we're still gonna have a farewell gathering. We got it when we are able to gather and order herbs and snacks and talking smart.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay David.
John, you want to take us out of this one?
Nope, I want tradition to reign.
Go read Amos.
John can still take it.
Second?
I'll take the second.
I'm putting John as the second.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
opposed. Your meeting adjourned?
Here you go.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks everybody.
You go.
John, do you have one last?
Uh, sure. Let me find it. I had it.
You're dating yourself.
That's only legal in Arkansas. I'm gonna do it on a purple PowerPoint for you Jeff.
Jeff's gone.
No, he stole my good one. Uh, where is it? I just had it.
You had a good one?
Oh. Yeah.
Let me, let me stop recording first.